Hello.
Hi.
Hi. Hello.
Hola.
Everybody there? Hola.
Hola.
Everybody there?
I'm hoping Anna will join us right after the Pledge of Allegiance. So why don't we get started with that? Tech team, we are ready to begin and go live on Facebook.
Progress.
There she is, great.
Sorry, I was trying to log in for my.
No worries, we're happy you're here.
Kelly, make sure you do a roll call.
Thank you for the reminder, Ms. Carlisle. Alrighty, team, we are now officially live on Facebook. Happy Wednesday, thank you for joining us. Today, we will be having a executive function. Sorry, executive session meeting to go over. Let's begin with our Pledge of Allegiance. Oh, I'm sorry, I called this meeting toward at 6:07. It's been awhile since we've had official meeting. Still on summer vacation mode. My apologies. Thank you, Dr. Beto. Alrighty, team, make sure to unmute yourselves and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance.
The pledge of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, team. Make sure to unmute yourselves again. And Veronica, may we please have a roll call for attendance purposes?
Yes, roll call for attendance. Ms. Santiago?
Here.
Mr. Jimenez? Ms. Alfaro? Ms. Alfaro?
Present.
Ms. Hernandez?
Present.
Ms. Garcia?
Present.
Ms. Carlisle?
Present.
Ms. Vela?
Present.
That's seven members present.
Seven members present, thank you so much. Alrighty. As you see on the agenda, we did number one and two. Next up is step number three. And so I will turn it over to our superintendent, Dr. Beto.
Good evening. Can everyone hear me because I feel like there's an echo?
I'm sorry, Dr. Beto, can I interrupt you for a second? Team, my mind is all over the place after yesterday's news. So please accept my apology for if I seem a little all over the place because I am. I'd like to come into the report and to the community a statement that I have put together for this meeting. The Chelsea Public Schools community was shaken yesterday by the news of very, very serious charges filed against our colleague on the school committee, Henry Wilson, involving one of our students. Needless to say, we are deeply troubled by these allegations. We appreciate the superintendent's swift handling of the matter, taking all the appropriate steps, notifying families and staff, and offering the district's full cooperation to the Suffolk County District Attorney, Chelsea Police Department, and others handling the investigation and prosecution. I know that Dr. Beto, her team, and the Chelsea School Committee will make supports available to anyone who may need them as a result of this disturbance. Thank you, and I will turn it back to Dr. Beto.
Thank you, Chairwoman Kelly. I am pleased and excited to share our summer school updates. What we have is I'm going to actually turn it over to Assistant Superintendent Mr. Adam Delaney and to our new Extended Learning Coordinator, Malik, and he's on the line as well. He'll be presenting as well, but we have some exciting news about our summer school programs and our participation rates and all of the courses that we would offer. So I'm going to go ahead and let Mr. Delaney take it from here.
Gladly, thank you, Dr. Beto. Yeah, we did have a very successful summer program over the course of the summer, and I'm just going to give you some highlights. And I'm actually going to turn it over to Malik Haushen, who we're very excited to have with us today. So, quick overview, our program ran from July 6th to July 29th. You know, we were going into this summer not really knowing what things were going to look like, but we made a substantial effort to try to do in-person learning because we felt that that was really important with the, you know, to continue the efforts we had in the spring. We had ten different programs at three different locations. At the high school, we actually had the high school credit recovery program. We had an eight-nine transition program for, you know, our students traveling from middle school to high school. We had an E S Y program at all levels, but the high school and the middle school program was housed at the high school. And an E S Y program is called Extended School Year for Special Education Students who have that on their I E P. We also had L programming across the district for all grades. High school and middle school was housed at the high school. And then we also had a middle school general education program, which was, you know, partly enrichment, partly mitigating learning loss. At the elementary complex, we had another general ed program, which was partly enrichment, partly to mitigate learning loss. We also had L programs and we had our elementary E S Y program. And at the E L C, we had a general gen ed program and we also had an E S Y program. All programs were in person, however, there were some limited remote learning options for students with the E S Y on their I E P, as well as we had a couple of unique situations for credit recovery, which we allowed some remote learning for. We had a wonderful team of site supervisors. So each one of those programs had a teacher leader who was in charge of the program and they supported all of the teachers. We had twenty-four district-wide staff, seventy-seven teachers, thirty-three paraprofessionals, and we served a total of eight-hundred-twenty-seven students. And I want to emphasize that that's, we weren't really sure how many we would get. We knew that at the end of last year, we had some burnout with our staff as well as our students. You know, we felt like people were going to want to need a break, but we were only about a hundred, hundred-and-fifty students short of two years ago when we were full in person. So we were really happy that that many kids were interested in participating and, you know, we had a lot of fun. The positions and services, you know, just so we see the supports that we're giving. We had a social worker at each developmental level. We had a nurse for each location. We actually continued our COVID testing and we had two coordinators to oversee the testing and testing was available at every site. We had five specialist reading teachers in the E S Y program. Also, we had three speech and language pathologists. We had, we had an occupational therapist, a physical therapist, a vision specialist. So all of those related services were continued during the summer. I do want to give a shout out to Julie Fori. So for the last two years, she's been serving as a summer program manager. We recognized the need to have somebody in charge of sort of the whole thing. And she worked tirelessly to set things up. And as Dr. Beto said, this year, we added an extended learning coordinator position, which was Malik Haushen, and you're going to hear from him soon. He only started on July 1st, so he wasn't involved in the actual planning of this summer programming. But I will say, you will be getting to know him very well very soon. He has been making his rounds in the city. I think he knows more people than me at this point, and I was born in the city. So he really is, he's a guy who wants to come in and, you know, do everything he can to help kids. So he took voracious notes, he observed everything that was going on. He's currently working on a summer school playbook so that he can start working on next summer and he's, he already has started working on next summer. So with that, I'm actually going to turn it over to Malik and you can hear from him from some general takeaways from the program, from his perspective. And with that, I give you Malik Haushen.
Hi, everyone, thank you, thank you, Dr. Beto, thank you, School Committee, Mr. Delaney. It's been an absolute pleasure being in Chelsea. But to summer school, so I, we had a couple, a couple takeaways from summer school. One, especially since I just started and so I'm kind of seeing it from three-thousand, thirty thousand feet. Summer school was extremely successful. Putting together extended year in-person programming in a summer following COVID shutdowns and remote learning was definitely not an easy task. Some students had not been in school all year. This should help immensely as they return to in-person learning for the next school year. Parent outreach and communication was absolutely commendable. Leadership at the summer school supervisor level was very professional. There was an impressive amount of teamwork taking place. As a good example, there's a couple of examples that I picked up on. One were the transportation issues that came about, as they always do. But summer school, we were definitely able to fix them in a timely manner. And we even managed a school cancellation due to inclement weather, which normally does not happen in summer. So to be able to put that together so fast was extremely impressive. Summer school will help, this summer school will help set the groundwork for what we will be doing in the future. As, as Mr. Delaney mentioned, I'm hoping that we can start having a playbook for, so we can all have a go at, for future planning for summer schools in the future. And this year was very helpful in beginning that process. And finally, and definitely most importantly, there were a lot of smiles. Smiles were present throughout summer school amongst the students and their parents. In the end, that's what summer school is all about. It's about academic advancement through project-based learning and activities, plus having fun while doing it. Next slide, please. Speaking of smiles and project-based learning, so I, I was at the complex for a majority of it. So I was lucky enough to be able to hang out with, with the kids down at the complex. And this classroom in particular, they were great. So what you see here are some pictures of third grade students loving their project-based hands-on learning, making video game controls and using coding to produce digital music. I will say the music was great and we actually did use the controllers to play Super Mario Brothers. It was very cool, very cool. So just to continue just a little bit, what you'll notice throughout the rest of it, and I know we don't have that much time, but as Mr. Delaney mentioned, what we did was we put in a far more in-depth description of the programs. So feel free to go through those as you will, if you want, if you're looking for a little bit more information. Mr. Delaney mentioned that we have E S Y, we have the E L L programs in the gen ed throughout. There is one program that I would like to just mention, and that is the Transition Summer School Program. I'm very familiar with this program, having overseen the same type of program for four years up in Bethune. This is the type of summer program offering that really supports students, which tend to struggle in school, assisting with not only their ability to graduate, but graduating on time. It gives our students a head start on high school, allowing them to be comfortable, confident, and have earned vital credits that would need to cross the finish line from day one. This is a great program and I'm really looking forward to building on this in the future. Mr. Delaney, we want to open it up to questions, what would you like to do, sir?
Yeah, that sounds good. If you guys have any questions, either for me or for Malik or for Dr. Beto around summer school or even around Mr. Haushen's position.
Go ahead, Ms. Hernandez.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It sounds like it was a very exciting summer night, but the students were happy to be back in the building and being with their peers. I'm just wondering, as you're writing on your playbook, or is this, are you going to do like a parent survey? Ask them how they felt about the programming this summer and what else we could offer for the following summer? Maybe, you know, general education is important, but I've noticed that enrichment is also a plus. A lot of our students don't get to go to summer camp. Parents can't afford to sign them up in something. So if we're able to offer any enrichment, I think that will be great because it's something for them to do and stay busy during the summer.
I mean, yeah, we definitely want to keep the kids busy. Summer school is a great opportunity to keep the kids engaged, project-based learning, have fun. I mean, school should be fun, especially in our after-school or summer school programs. I think this playbook, which is just getting started, will evolve throughout the year. I look forward to getting feedback from everyone involved, whether it's parents, students, staff, administrators, everyone involved, get, get feedback. Be a part of the process for budgeting, for example, you know, I'm really fresh to this. So everything that I'm doing and that I'll be lucky to participate in with Mr. Delaney as we go through will be a learning process. So what I, what I will hope to, to be, to have is something concrete for, to share out with everybody as we head into next summer school. But again, it's going to be evolving in a work, in a work in progress. But I think it's important to start laying some, some groundwork as we, as we begin. And I was super lucky to just be able to start on July 1st and kind of hop right in.
Thank you, and I'm happy to see that we were able to do the recovery credit and the transition program. That's very important.
Oh, I just wanted to, if I may, shout out to the REACH program. The pictures that we had at the beginning were all from the REACH program. And that was a beautiful night that we had with, with REACH and the students sharing their projects. And so we, we were, we, they could have taken, they, they prepared, they created their own businesses. And I, I'm almost convinced that some of them will plant, that those were seeds planted, that they might actually do this in the future. So that was a real exciting night and I just wanted to do a little shout out to REACH.
Any other questions, team?
If I could just say something?
Go ahead, Ms. Hernandez.
I just want to say, you've done great work. I'm extremely proud of the product and proud of all the hard work that's gone into it and what's coming. So I look forward to it.
Congratulations to you and your staff for a wonderful summer program. Adam, thank you for your information. You always are good at giving us good, good information. And I'm glad that everything turned out well for the students, thank you.
Thank you.
Great job, summer team. Our students are so grateful and are so lucky to have you on our side. Alrighty, team, next up, we have the COVID-19 update.
Okay, are you able to see my screen right now because it's, it's red? Okay.
Well, we're seeing as the agenda.
Okay.
Yeah, if you can't see it, maybe you need to stop sharing and then share again.
I can see it. Updating.
There we go, now, now you stop sharing.
Okay. Yeah, it's turning red on me.
There you go.
Or good, alright, great. Okay, so I'm excited to present to you our safe reopening of schools and an update. And so as you can see, we're starting a new school year. So we have a new color for all, for our reopening. Instead of the red, we're going with blue because this is a new year. And we are excited about a new year. So I will just be providing a brief update on the most recent DESI guidance. And then at the end of this presentation, I'm going to provide, so I'm going to make my recommendations based on the DESI guidance and what we've been hearing from, and, and from our teachers and our teachers' union as well. We've been working very closely with C T U leadership. So here is our agenda for this presentation. I'm going to review the guidance and make my recommendations and then I'll go through each item. Masks, COVID-19 testing, vaccinations, and then questions and comments. So here is the DESI guidance, I'm just going to walk you through it. And so DESI gave us guidance several weeks ago. And the guidance was developed jointly by DESI and the Department of Health and they outlined some recommendations. All the, just, all districts and schools will be required to be in-person and full-time, five days a week in the fall. And they are also encouraging the following, that schools maintain ventilation upgrades, hand hygiene practices, extra policies for students and staff to stay home when sick, and then that we monitor the public health situation and they may issue additional guidance as needed. So here is the guidance from DESI regarding masks that they have provided. So this fall, DESI and D P H have strongly recommended that all students in kindergarten through six wear masks indoors, of course, except for students who can't due to medical conditions. And then masks, they're saying masks are not necessary outdoors. And then they are also strongly recommending that unvaccinated staff in all grades and unvaccinated students in grade seven and above and unvaccinated visitors wear masks indoors. Another recommendation is that schools allow vaccinated students to remain unmasked and that any individual at higher risk for severe disease from COVID or a household that has a household member should wear a mask. And then, of course, any child or family who prefers, prefers to wear a mask at school can be supported in this choice. And then by federal public health order, all students and staff are required to wear masks on school buses and in health offices. And then additional, they're going to provide additional guidance for school health professionals. It's, it's coming soon. So that's just their guidance in a nutshell regarding masks, just masks. The next area that, of the guidance covered was COVID-19 testing. And they're highly encouraging districts to maintain or establish a robust program for COVID-19 testing, including both diagnostic and screening. And so there, they will continue to offer their services to districts at no cost. And so additionally, districts are strongly encouraged to sign up for the statewide COVID testing program, which we were already signed, we have already, we were already in the program. And so we will continue with the program. And then contact tracing and quarantine protocols have changed a little. And as, as part of the guidance, districts in the statewide testing program are using other diagnostic testing programs that are approved, will be able to implement a new test and stay protocol in lieu of requiring asymptomatic close contacts to quarantine. And what that's saying is that kids could be tested each day. So that way they're not quarantined and that way they don't have, we're not, they're not learning, they're not home and not being educated. The goal is to keep the kids in school. And then under, under the test and stay, again, asymptomatic close contacts will have the option to remain in school. And so that, that's the guidance in a nutshell from DESI that we received most recently. Now, I, I also wanted to throw in the guidance from the American Academy of Pediatrics and the Center for Disease Control. And so on July 19th, the American Academy of Pediatric recommends a layered approach for all students, teachers, and staff, which includes a recommendation that everyone older than, older than age two wear masks regardless of vaccination status. And then the Centers for Disease Control suggests a return to indoor mask wearing in, in their CDC guidelines. And they're saying that that's universal indoor masking for all teacher, staff, students, and visitors to school regardless of vaccination status. That was issued by the CDC on July 27th. So therefore, the rec, what I'm recommending and do know that I have been in conversations with our teacher, our teacher union leadership and based on just all the different guidance that we've received and what I'm recommending for our community is that masks should be required for all students and staff, vaccinated or unvaccinated, indoors and on school buses. And then when masks are off for eating or mask breaks for students in grade levels where, that are vaccination eligible, the student will, the, the district will strive for a maximum of social distancing at lunch with a minimum of three feet socially distance. And so, and then I'm also recommending that no masking or physical distancing be required outdoors. And then, of course, we continue with our COVID-19 testing. Oops, wrong way. And then regarding vaccination mandates, and, and there's been a lot of movement in this area across the, there, there's been a lot of movement and I'm sure you're hearing it in the media. And I, I do believe that this is an issue that we need to watch really closely. And it's on the, there's a lot of conversation on the horizon. And FDA is, you know, looking, there, there's, their approval of COVID-19 vaccine could be soon. We don't know how soon, but we just need to take, we just need to watch this closely. And then there are also high rates of voluntary educator and school staff vaccination in Massachusetts and in our district. So the city of Chelsea right now has a vaccination rate of sixty-six percent. Shout out to our city, we've done an amazing job of getting our community vaccinated. We are four percent higher than the state's vaccination rate, which is at sixty-two percent. So my recommendation for mandating vaccinations would be to wait on this. And that is all I have for right now, and I welcome questions and comments.
Thank you, Superintendent. I really appreciate you coming out and telling us all this information now so the parents will be ready for opening school. I think the safety of the students and the teachers are a top priority and I'm glad that we're going to implement this program. And I think it will work out better for everybody's health and wellbeing. Thank you very much, Superintendent.
You're welcome.
Ms. Santiago has her hand raised, and I would like to speak after her.
Kelly, Ms. Santiago.
There you go.
Thank you, Almi, for the for the presentation on this and for your work. I have shared both to you and with other folks in the community just to make sure our families understand that D E S I is, in terms of what options we have, like the, like D E S I has sort of, you know, really come and told us, right, like the, this is, it's really hard, in other words, for us to have any type of phase in that we had discussed last year. I've just been hearing from families that there's a large percentage that feels comfortable to school. And I still have families that feel some reservations about it. The sharing of your vaccination rates is was always helpful. And thank you for for having brought that information to tonight's meeting for anybody watching. I just had, like, I I personally, my daughter, I think, again, I've said this in other spaces for those that are new here. I believe that, you know, I, out of this school committee, I'm the only one that actively has a child in Chelsea Public Schools right now. My daughter's transitioning to middle school. You know, this past year was really hard for all our students and equally for those that are transitioning to a new building. I I have a ton of questions. I'm grateful that I, that, you know, everyone has been really helpful in trying to answer them. I have some unease about, you know, this, the, this whole process around, you know, the quarantining. What's made me feel better is that we have instituted pool testing. And thank you, Almi, and 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 for your leadership on that and Adam for his work. That does make me feel better. But I was just, as you presented the slides, I wanted to just pull us back to that because that's immediately one of my questions, right? What happens if, you know, we do have a student that tests positive? How does that relate to pool testing? You know, how can we really use that pool testing right in a way to to plan ahead or try to prevent, you know, any any sort of scares on that on that end with either students or or teachers? Because if they're, if they're not asked to quarantine, right? What what are the things that we're we're sort of counting on that that make us feel comfortable in making that decision? It feels important to know.
Member Santiago, I'm gonna turn this over to our expert, Dr. Ph. D. Delaney.
Yeah, and and that's not a real doctor Ph. D., by the way, but yeah, Ms. Santiago, middle school, oh, my God, I'm I'm like, I'm kind of blown away with that. But to your question, so D E S I is incorporating something called a test and stay, which I think we're very interested in, and I'll tell you why. We had over three hundred positive cases over the course of the year on campus. And in all of those, we quarantined probably four or five hundred people over the course of the year. Out of those four or five hundred people, only two of them reported testing positive. One was in the very beginning of the year in a department where people were not social distancing, not wearing masks and working shoulder to shoulder. And the other person who was positive was actually the sibling of the positive person, which means he likely got the virus at home, not at at school. So in all of our positive cases, we know that spread on campus is very, very unlikely if we are following all of the mitigation strategies like distancing and masking and sanitizing, and especially with the older grades with the vaccinations. So without the test and stay program, we would end up, because we are going to get positive kids. Kids are, kids are testing positive. It's it is a reality. And when we do, we're going to contact trace. Prior to test and stay, contact tracing would result in a kid going home for two weeks and missing two weeks of education. What we'll do now is throughout the entire gestation, possible gestation period, we will test that, any close contacts every day as they come in. If they're positive, yeah, they're gonna go home and we'll contact trace for those kids. But most likely, the majority of close contacts, the vast majority of close contacts will test negative, and that will allow them to not have to miss schooling.
Thank you, Adam. That's helpful for, I think, everybody to understand in more detail, right? When we think about the day to day and, you know, we as parents like what to do, you know, if the, if we hear information and how the school's dealing with that, that's really helpful.
I will, if I can add, actually, if I have the opportunity to plug with our parents who are watching and we can spread the word, we can't do that test and stay program if we don't have the consent paperwork. So families should look for that consent paperwork to be going home either a few days before school starts or on the very first day it would go home with the kids. So in order to be able to allow us to do the test with the close contacts, we would have to have consent forms signed. We have an online version and a paper version, so my plug is that I I strongly, strongly recommend people to get that consent in so that your students can participate in our COVID safety checks. And if anyone has any questions, you know, I'm happy to, I'm happy to answer them. And I'm happy to talk to any family or parent who has any reservations about the vaccine.
Yeah, thank you, Adam. I actually was, that was the follow-up. How did we do when we were getting consent forms for the pool testing? And it, that was actually the follow-up, like if there was any opportunity for us as a school committee to actually support, you know, whether it's communicating that or, again, like you said, you know, encouraging folks to contact you. Did you, we do okay in terms of filling out those consent forms at pool testing?
Yeah, so we had that tracked by school. And our our lowest percentage school was close to forty percent, which wasn't that bad. But one of our schools, I'll I'll call it the Kelly School, was close to ninety percent. So, you know, it it ranges throughout, but to your point, I do agree, there's more work to be done with that. You know, we did a lot of communication, but we also did it in the middle of, you know, March and April where there was a whole lot going on. We were shifting from remote to in-person. So this year, we're starting a year fresh. We have our systems in place. All of our kids are going to be in. So we're we're gonna be much more prepared to really get that messaging out and really strongly, strongly encourage. It will never be, I don't believe it'll ever be required, but we're gonna strongly encourage families to participate because it's gonna lead to keeping our kids safer.
Great. Thank you, Adam. We're on board with that. And Almi, and I'll, and this is that last question I had, and I'll pause because I know the discussion will give, you know, this discussion amongst all of us will allow for, you know, more information. But the the other thing that's really big on my mind, Almi, is any policy changes or updates due to this? And I know you mentioned that quickly, so I just wanted to ask, do you foresee any immediate policy changes that you would want us to work on? I know that we have, you know, we have to schedule our next policy and procedure subcommittee. Are there any ones in your, you know, right now that you think we would be like immediately important before school starts? And that's all I had, and I'll, I'll, you know, and Roberto and other folks have questions.
And as far as policy or concerns, I don't really see anything right now that we need to change because we were following D E S I guidance when we opened schools, and then they just reissued new guidance. So the new guidance superseds the guidance that we had previously. And then we're also, our M O A with C T U, our union, expired June thirtieth. So I'm currently in conversation with our union leadership about a new M O A that we can agree upon. And so that will kick into gear once we get that together real soon. And that will outline the parameters, for example. And depending on this conversation too, it it will outline parameters, let's say, for for masking or for vaccination or for social distancing. So all of that, those are all working conditions that we still negotiate as well. So I don't anticipate anticipate like an actual per se policy, but I do anticipate that we have to change our M O, we're gonna, we're rewrite, we have to rewrite our entire M O A again with our union. And then I will come, I would, after this conversation, I will have conversations with our union leadership, and then we will work together to finalize a new memorandum of understanding that will need to be ratified by by their constituents and teach and and the teachers, and then it will need to be approved at school committee.
Thank you, Almi. The one that I, that, and you know, this could be for later, follow-up for later, and I'm hearing you on the M O and then on the M O U. Certainly. But also thinking about like how, you know, how, how, you know, if COVID is still impacting families, like what, you know, would we need to look at? You know, I don't know if it's technically a policy change or any small amendment to that or given any special conditions, like to make sure that students have support if something happens, you know, in the family or in their homes that we're aware and how they can feel, you know, comfortable to communicate that obviously to their teacher and the principal. But ultimately, that it doesn't affect, you know, that there can be, there, just to revisit, I think, to look at or even a refresher, I think, for myself or for others about how we we work around, you know, sick days and and absences and and all of that sort of thing. Just as a, as a, something that comes to mind if necessary.
Thank you. Thank you. We can definitely review those and see if there needs to be changes.
Thank you, Ms. Santiago. Go ahead, Mr. Jimenez.
Yeah, I, you know, the first thing I want to point out is that what we've been hearing from D E S I is that they're requiring things that increase risk. They're requiring us to be in person. They're requiring us to be five days in person, which are all things that we want, right? But these things, because we are having to do them, they do require, they do increase the risk, right? But they're only encouraging or maybe even strongly encouraging the things that decrease risk. I think that this is more of the same that we've seen from D E S I where they continue prioritizing other things besides the health and safety of our students. If they actually were prioritizing that, we would see requirements coming from D E S I. And I think it's it's a shame that they're that they're not taking a stronger stance. They're still continuing to just leave us out here, having to make the hard decisions city by city, making everyone less safe because it means that, you know, maybe Everett will make a different decision, maybe Revere will make a different decision. I think it's a shame, and they should do better. And the issue at hand, I I I think that I I agree fully with the need to require masks for everybody. I do think, I I think we should strongly consider requiring vaccination now. I I think waiting is is less helpful. I I think, I I would like to hear what other members think about vaccine requirements for students and and whether people feel differently now or after the vaccine is fully F D A approved. I just strongly believe that the fastest way for us to get over this pandemic is for everybody to get vaccinated as soon as possible. We're seeing more and more private employers, state government, California just announced today that they're gonna be requiring it from people. I think that the way for us to keep all of our students and our staff safest is to require this vaccine for students. I'm hopeful that the vaccine will be fully approved soon. And then at that point, I really see no reason why we wouldn't require it the same way that we require other vaccines. I'm really happy to see it sixty-six point two percent vaccination. That's awesome. But my understanding is that herd immunity requires seventy, maybe even eighty percent vaccination rates. So I think that we need as much protection as possible, right? It's 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 not, it's not enough, even if we're doing really great. And I'm super grateful for the work that, you know, the schools department has done. The city of Chelsea has done a fantastic work, right? Everybody's doing their part to push people to 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 see that the importance of this. But I I also think that we're not gonna get there until there are some requirements mandated by by school department, school districts, you know, other other corporate corporations, things like that. I think I think we need to, we need to do as much as we can. And and to, like, as much protection as possible, to me, means requiring masks, requiring vaccines as soon as we feel comfortable doing so. I am comfortable right now to have that conversation. I would hope that a majority of us feel comfortable, you know, today, hopefully soon, if not today. This is not only about the safety of our kids, but about the safety of their parents and their grandparents who live with them, and some of them are immunocompromised. They can't get vaccinated. Some of them have siblings who are younger than twelve who can't get vaccinated. I have a baby who is one year old. I wish he could get vaccinated, but he can't. And so, you know, I think it's, we need to do our part because it's not just about the safety of the kids, it's about the safety of their families. It's about the safety of our surrounding communities, right? Because Chelsea is not an island, and it is our duty to protect our students and our and their families. But also, I think it's our duty as, you know, not just like the officials, but as as people who care about our communities to protect our communities and the surrounding communities as well, so that we can return to post-pandemic life as soon as possible. We are not through this yet. We're seeing that the Delta variant and the Lambda variant, right? They're impacting kids in ways that we haven't seen before. That is scary. I I'm not gonna, not gonna mince words here. I am very scared that my baby will get, will get COVID. And, you know, it's a very small risk that that anything serious will happen, but it's a risk. And and it's one that I think we need to take seriously as a community. So if you haven't done so yet, please go get vaccinated, and I would ask the committee to consider on the fire vaccinations as well. Thank you.
Can I say something?
Thank you, Mr. Jimenez. Oh, go ahead, Mr. Hernandez.
I'm gonna, I shut off my video only because it doesn't, the the, the voice and the 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 audio don't work well and the video don't work well together. Roberto, I appreciate everything you've said, and I too, I understand exactly what you're saying. I can't tell you that at this moment in time right now, I can give you an answer and say, yes, I think everybody should get vaccinated. We should, we should demand it, make it a requirement, only because I need to give it a little bit more thought. Because it is, it is a difficult call to make. Because even even so, there are going to be, we have to, we have to understand it's also gonna be a lot of kids that for religious religious purposes will not allow their children to be vaccinated. And we cannot make them get vaccinated. So we're gonna have a good percentage there that are not gonna vaccinate their children. And that's a percentage that we're gonna need to deal with. There are some that that will not be able to be vaccinated because of health reasons. So there's, there's going to be a good amount of kids that will not be able to be vaccinated. Anyway, even if we were to make it mandatory. But um, but it is something, this is something that I, I think we should all think about strongly because it's true, it's true what you're saying. I don't know how I would feel as a parent if I was told that my child has to get vaccinated. But I also understand everything that you've said, and it does make total sense because there are a lot of people out there, and I think of my mom who's no longer here. But if my mother was here, still, she would be one person that would be at very high risk if she ever got COVID to.
And I think we lost you.
But I do promise you that I will give it a lot of thought, okay?
Thank you. Can I, can I just, can I just make a quick comment and reply to that, Mr. Hernandez?
Sure.
Absolutely. Go ahead.
I I don't disagree that there are, that there are students that are gonna, you know, for either health reasons or religious reasons are gonna choose to not get vaccinated. That's okay, but I think the percentage that who would not object if it was required is a lot higher than where we are right now. So I think that there is a lot of improvement that we can do on our current numbers, even accounting for religious and health reasons, because I I agree, I I, I think, I think that has to be taken into consideration. Also, in in regarding the question of like how parents might feel if we tell them that, you know, they're required to get vaccinated, there's already vaccines that we require. So I think that 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 might be an an important, you know, conversation to have, especially around, you know, whether it's fully F D A approved versus emergency authorization only. So, yeah, thank you so much. It's helpful.
Thank you, Mr. Jimenez and Ms. Hernandez. Are there any other questions or comments?
Yes, Madam Chair, I have a question. My question is, we're all excited to have everybody back in school in the building. But do we have the plan B? You know, every day you hear the news, cases going up, kids, are are students equipped with their Chromebooks? Do they still have it in case? Remember, we went home for a day or two and we never came back, so. Remember, we went home for a day or two and we never came back. So what's our plan B? We're so focused on getting the kids in. But, you know, at this point, I'm hopeful that we don't need to rely on a plan B. But is it gonna be last minute? Come pick up Chromebooks, come pick up hotspots. Are we in a better space now than when it first happened? Are we gonna be ready just to, okay, we're going home tomorrow, we start remote. So what is the planning around that?
Dusty has no plan B. And that's part of the, anyway, I'll let, I'll let Dr. Abada.
Yeah, I will, I will respond. Um, so our plan B, and we have talked actually about this already. Um, we are currently, and I'm gonna let Monica speak a little bit, Ms. Lamboy speak a little bit more too. Uh, we are currently collecting Chromebooks, updating them, cleaning them, getting them ready for redistribution. What we learned through the pandemic is that many of our students didn't have computers at home, didn't have internet access at home, didn't have hotspots. So our, our rationale is we'd like to have kids, each kid still have their own Chromebook that they have for homework while we're in person. And then if we ever have to pivot and go back to remote learning, they already have a Chromebook that has their name that they own. And we are continuing to to monitor the situation because we are in Chelsea or in the state about two percent. I I forgive me, I don't know the positivity rate, but we have to monitor it. And so we are cur- currently always looking at, um, we got really good at looking at the percent positivity rate in the last eighteen months. And so that's something we will, we will watch. And then we are, we have also purchased new Chromebooks. And um, making sure that we have updated Chromebooks because some Chromebooks, you know, kids take them home all year long. Um, they get broken and we anticipate that um, Chromebooks are gonna break. So we've been purchasing new Chromebooks, always having an inventory. Our goal is to have inventory at school where kids have their personal Chromebooks and inventory at, in the classroom. And so I'm gonna let Ms. Lamboy speak a little bit more to that and hotspots. And so, um, Monica, I'll let you take it.
Sure. I'll pick up where the superintendent left off. Um, in terms of having a device at school and at home, that would be for our tiniest kids so that they don't have to carry them back and forth. So from elementary, from fourth grade down, our goal is to have two devices per pupil. Um, so on the first day of school, we are first couple of days of school hoping to redistribute Chromebooks back out to our fifth graders and up where our fifth grade and ninth grade would get brand new devices. They last for four years, so that will carry them through the grade band that they're in. Um, and that will be their device for those four years. Then at our elementary schools, um, we are still waiting for a little bit of delivery. So day one, we'll have Chromebooks in the classroom. Within a week or so, we will have a second set available for distribution to them to be staying at home as well. Um, should something happen in the first week or so, we obviously have the full set in the classroom and we can get it out to to those kids. Um, I will ask if I, since we're on TV, um, if there are any families that still do have Chromebooks at home, we are asking that you do return them to the school. We'll take them in, we're gonna clean them up, we're gonna make sure that they're ready for redistribution. We do have a few hundred that are still out in households um, around the city. We're gonna send out a message in the next day or so to targeted to those families. Ask them to bring them in so we can make sure they're clean and shiny and ready to roll back out when school starts.
Thank you. I have more questions, but we're, I'll let other members ask.
You should go, Marissa. I have a few questions. It's okay.
Are those old hands being raised or Ms. Santiago and and Mr. Jimenez used to have questions?
I I have a follow up about about what um, Ms. Flores was just talking about, but I think if she has other questions, then she should, she should go.
Well, I just have one more and it's regarding, and I haven't heard this from any of our parents in this district, but I've heard from where I'm at, a parent called and, you know, she does not want the child to be back, so I like, what I, I didn't speak to the parent, but I'm saying, do these parents now have to do a homeschool petition to school committee? And now they'll be considered homeschool because, um, you know, DSC is not allowing for us to do any kind of remote learning. So if they're not coming in because they're so afraid, um, what is the steps for them? Is it homeschool for those students?
Thank you, Ms. Flores. Uh, that is a great question. And I appreciate it because it will give us an opportunity to explain a little bit more. And I'm gonna be calling on Mr. Lovato um, about our uh, virtual school. So we did apply for a virtual school, as you know, and thank you for approving um, and and giving us the opportunity to create and execute. So we have been implementing. Uh, we have uh, hired a principal who's been working with us now for about a week and a half. And she's been busy hiring staff. The virtual school is for a small amount of students. Um, there will be, you can't, the way it's gonna work, and I'm gonna let Mr. Lovato explain a little bit more about the intake process, is that students will register for a school and then they will be recommended by the educators at the school to the virtual school. It's for a small number of students. And it's individual, it's a school for individualization of instruction. So if a child, for example, um, has social anxiety or a child, let's say, in high school gets, student gets pregnant and has a child, this would be a perfect, uh, program for the, uh, for, uh, profile for a virtual school. Or for example, if a child is homebound, needs home tutoring, this student could go to the virtual school. So we've really tried to take advantage of what we learned in remote learning and say, you know what, we could do a small virtual academy for certain circumstances. We have built in a little wiggle room case by case for um, students who are maybe um, have, are medically fragile. And this could be an opportunity for them to be in the virtual school. So I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Lovato. And um, and hopefully he can answer a little bit of that question. Um, it's not a remote learning school. I want to make that very clear. We can't sign up for it. It has, you have to be screen for it. Um, but I will let Mr. Lovato talk a little bit more about it.
Uh, forgive me, forgive me for interrupting Madam Chair and and Dr. Abada and Mr. Lovato. Um, this is the third time, I know it's not done with that intention, but I just want to reiterate to the community. Um, this is the ti- the third time I hear us talk about the virtual school and say that this would be perfect for students that fall within a certain criteria. Um, being pregnant does not mean that you cannot attend our Chelsea Public Schools. I think in, just to reframe it a little bit, that I think it's saying that for those students that have difficulty or some type of um, you know, obstacles such as being maybe if you need the the extra time at home as a new mom or a dad um, or parents, that you could have that. But I just want to make sure that when we talk about this, that the perception to our students is not because you're get pregnant that you need to be in another school. But I I know that's not your, like, what you you said, Dr. Abada, but just for folks that might be hearing that, I I wanted to bring that back. Sorry for the interruption.
Uh, thank you, Dr. Abada, school committee members. Um, one of the things that I'd like to point out real quick is what Dr. Abada asked us, asked me to do when we were working with the team on the implementation guide is she also recognizes beyond COVID long term thinking that there's a need for alternative um, education. And some of it may not be the traditional programs, as some of it would. We did see is that there was a lot of students uh, nationwide, everywhere that we saw that don't always fit in a perfect box of a high school. And the alternative programs such as this one and the one that we currently have with the Chelsea opportunity, it just allows us to think about kids a little bit different, um, and recognize the differences and recognize the different challenges is what we really tried to do when we were capturing the intent of this program. So with the program itself, as uh, Dr. Abada did a great job explaining um, the registration process and the intake process, what we really wanted to do is make sure that there was still a connection with their homeschool. Uh, for the students that are entering the program, uh, the, the school since, uh, because of COVID or other factors that are prohibiting the child to enter a school at this time. Uh, we recognize the importance of the transition back in, and that's the, the, and one of the main purposes along with the recommendations required, as Dr. Abada mentioned, uh, that we wanted them to register at their homeschool. Um, we do have, we know it's not easy to teach some of the factors such as reading. Uh, we know that there's challenges with K-five students compared to secondary students uh, that are a little bit more difficult to meet during um, a remote uh, setting. So one of the things that we wanted to do as well is to make sure that, you know, it wasn't necessarily a wish list, uh, to enter the program and that there were factors that um, are representative of what's really going on in the family. And then also to, it also gives the principals an opportunity to understand their students and the circumstances that they're working with. And some of the challenges that our parents have as well too. So we were also hoping to capture that as well. Um, as Dr. Abada mentioned, um, Margaret Mancini, she's uh, been at it since she started. We're very excited to have her and uh, and uh, you know, she's plugging away on the handbook. She's, uh, we've sent out guidance to the principals at this point. We've sent out uh, posted it online. There's information for parents as what the process is, how to go about it. And we just posted this on Monday. Um, so the principals will start scheduling interviews, scheduling meetings with parents now and start making the appropriate recommendations for what that looks like. But other than that, if if you have questions, uh, please let me know and and I can answer.
Would this be a K through twelve?
Yes, ma'am. Uh, we are trying to emphasize more the secondary component because again, what we did do in the implementation guide is we did make a recommendation um, minus, you know, some factors due to COVID that, you know, K-five students, we really recommend that they're in a traditional program. And then also we made the same recommendations for uh, students with special needs and L students. But with that being said, we we know that there are real factors out there due to COVID, and so we're also prepared to service those students as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lovato, for your explanation. And to the team who entered or who asked really great, thought provoking questions. I'll now turn it over to Dr. Abada for our next topic.
Um, so, Chair, um, Garcia, I believe, um, we're, uh, member Jimenez and um, has his hand up. I don't know if you want, if there were more questions.
Mr. Jimenez and Ms. Santiago, I see that he...
Sorry, I was, I was, I was muted and I I had not, um, do you want me to go or do, Ms. I'll go first?
Uh, go ahead, Mr. Jimenez.
Yeah, I guess just, um, going back to Ms. Flores's question around, um, you know, what happens if we, like, cases spike and we need to close again? My understanding is that virtual school days would not count, so that would need to be a DSC. DSC would have to make a policy change, right, to allow for virtual days to count? Is that correct?
You are correct.
Got it. Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Santiago, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, this was just one of the things that I feel worked really well, that I felt really proud about. Um, missing Sarah already, right? Um, when we talked about our attendance rates, um, and, you know, what we were learning um, from, you know, in the midst of, you know, the, this past school year. Um, one of the things I can't seem to shake is, um, one, again, as a parent myself, a full-time working mom and navigating with my two older kids, you know what that was like. I often think about, you know, did, did having access to Wi-Fi at home actually really help, you know, our students? Um, in particular for homework assignments, um, being able to just facilitate, um, you know, have more options, you know, just feel like there was less of a burden on families to actually figure this out. Um, and I'm not sure that, you know, I I can't make a factual statement right now, right? Because I'm not doing that research, but I often feel like, you know, there's still a lot of burden in in our families. Um, in terms of what they're, what they're carrying right now and thinking about sending their babies back to school. Um, so I'm curious to know, um, Monica, if, in or or Dr. Abada, has there been any conversations or thoughts, um, as students shift in to in-person learning? If there's wiggle room, whether in our budget or in spending, like, based on where we are and, you know, what the cost of that would be, if it's something that we could consider, or, you know, if this is something that, yeah, if it would be something that we would consider. And would it be like, you know, for students that really have that need? Um, you know, not saying that every student needs to have it if there's not a need. Um, but if that's something that we've thought about, um, in terms of keeping consistency with, you know, student, student attendance and student participation was one, one question I had.
So I'll go ahead and start and then I'll turn it over to Ms. Lamboy. So connectivity is is very, something that we learned through the past, through the last eighteen months is connectivity is very important to our families. And it's, it really is, and I thank you so much for asking the question. Uh, it really is about equity, right? And many of our households don't have access to internet. They don't have connectivity. So one thing that we have really thought long and hard about in building into our budget is continuing with the hotspots for homework because that, that, that is equity at it, at the, at its heart. Um, giving our students access to connectivity to do their homework because they need it to do their lap, to do their, use their Chromebooks. So I think it's, it's, it's not, for me, it it's essential that we continue to think about this, that we make sure that every student in Chelsea Public Schools has, has access to internet, good, high-speed internet and connectivity. Um, we are in the works and, um, Ms. Lamboy and Mr. Lovato can uh, speak a little more about this and uh, in writing and applying for a connectivity grant. And so I'm gonna turn it over to them. First, I'm gonna, I'll let Ms. Lamboy speak. And um, and she'll probably, she can cover everything, but go ahead.
Um, thank you, Superintendent. It did take us a little bit of time, but we were able to provide either physical hotspots or Comcast codes to any families that indicated that they did not have access to Wi-Fi. Um, a substantial number that we funded through an array of different grant programs. Um, anyone that had a Comcast code that is still live, it will um, continue to go for several months. Um, depending on where we are, we can also extend it for time. So I'm hoping those families are still taking advantage of those Comcast codes. Uh, in terms of the physical hotspots, we did collect them in the same go-around when we brought the Chromebooks in, but we still have the physical um, retention of those devices. We are extending the time period on those. So we will be able to revolve them back out to families in the fall. And as the superintendent said, you know, we are looking at really any kind of grant opportunity to to fund this. And um, there, there's one that we're working on right now that looks very promising, but, um, you know, we will figure out what we need to do to make sure that our families have that connectivity that they need.
And Mr. Lovato, would you like to comment too, um, since you're working on the grant with Ms. Lamboy?
Sure, Dr. Abada. The only thing that I would add is that the grant has been made available. Uh, we just allowed some flexibility, as Monica talked about as well too, for uh, the entire purpose of the grant is just that connectivity to, um, you know, our families and and families such as our community that are struggling for what the internet access looks like. And as Dr. Aba- Abada menten- mentioned is that it's really equity. Um, and so that's what the grant focuses on as well.
That is like, super helpful to hear. Thank you all for really taking that into account. And and thank you, Alme, for naming equity and um, really, you know, shows all the work that, you know, you guys have been doing as a team to really make sure that we're looking at, you know, how to educate our whole student and taking that approach. Um, thank you all for looking into grants as well. Now I know if I see any Monica sent in the mirror way. Uh, but thank you, thank you all. I said it to Dr. Abada, but thank you all for, for, for sharing that. That's really important. Um, and then this is the last comment I have, and I thank you for your ears and your patience. Um, but one of the thoughts that I have is this is more towards the response, uh, to Mr. Jimenez around vaccination and just hearing our conversation a little bit about that. Um, you know, I'm a big fan of how do we... Um, you know, I'm a big fan of how do we move folks from A to B? And I've been saying that a lot throughout this year, even to my own family, um and thinking about individual needs and being, and clearly having a lot of compassion for individual needs that, you know, are present in in every household, right? Um and I'm curious to, sort of wondering about, one of the things that I think the city has done well, that I've said as well, is these community health centers and the partnerships that have really helped a lot of what we've been able to do in the city in terms of reaching people and and really providing resources, I think we've been fortunate on that end. Um and then second, second to that is, what opportunities could there be, Dr. Albeda, for us as a school? You know, this is not like, I don't, I know we have our hands full to reopen, um but maybe to consider in the fall if there's opportunities to do like a listening session or, you know, invite, you know, make either share uh resources on where these listening session, sessions are happening for parents to be able to, you know, maybe pop into a virtual or um some sort of discussion where they can ask questions to doctors. I know that, you know, some people have talked a lot about this, there's been some opportunities, I've seen other cities do this. Um I don't know how frequent they've been, but there's been some opportunities for that. And I just wonder if that would also be a resource. And, you know, maybe that's something the city could do, Dr. Albeda, I'm not saying it's like incumbent upon us as a school, but how we could partner perhaps, right, with other folks that might be able to to make something like that happen. Um, you know, you sharing the rates, you know, Mr. Jimenez was always sharing, you know, other, you know, facts that are important for us to consider. I just keep bringing back that, you know, the more information we can give people, I think that that'll, that gives them the space to sort of arrive to a decision um as opposed to, you know, looking at the various sources of media, right? Um and having to figure out what's a credible source here, you know, who who can I trust? And I think a lot of folks really trust, you know, us here in in the city of Chelsea. So any opportunity that we could probably partner with, whether it's like a a health center um and maybe do like some sort of like Q and A or something, um or make it available, might be helpful. Um and and again, I think that might be something that the city can support, right? Or it might be like something we could ask Tom, but I just keep coming back to that um as we get ready to shift, you know, a little bit.
Thank you.
Thank you, team, for your questions. Dr. Beta, I'll turn it back to you for the next item on the agenda.
We have um new business?
Sorry. Sorry, you were muted, I just wanted to make sure you weren't chatting over there.
No, I was the same. Uh is new business.
Great, alrighty, so thank you again for the great questions, Central Office Team. I know you have been so busy preparing for our schools to reopen up again. Our students are so happy to get, to go back to school. Um alright, with that, new business, consideration and action to accept three gifts as follows. Three thousand dollars from Care to Share for the music program, ten thousand dollars from Harbor House Collective for substance use prevention and albuterol inhalers with a value of a hundred and fifty dollars from Chelsea MGH Pediatrics for nursing services. Explanation, Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter seventy-one, Section thirty-seven A provides for the acceptance of gifts only with the approval of the Chelsea School Committee. Roll call.
Consideration and action to accept three gifts as follows. Three thousand dollars from Care to Share for the music program, ten thousand dollars from Harbor House Collective for substance abuse prevention and albuterol inhalers with a value of a hundred and fifty dollars from Chelsea MGH Pediatrics for nursing services. Ms. Santiago?
Yes.
Mr. Jimenez?
Yes.
Ms. Alfaro?
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
Ms. Carlyle?
Yes.
Ms. Velez? I think we lost Ms. Velez. Six in the affirmative, oh, Ms. Velez, are you there?
Yeah, I said yes, I may already speak up.
Couldn't see you, alright, seven in the affirmative, motion carries.
Seven in the affirmative, motion carries. Next, we have considered an action to accept the recommendation of the school superintendent and amend the general fund for the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school budget to increase funding from seven thousand four, oh no, sorry, a hundred and seven million, four hundred and fifty-two thousand eight hundred and fifty-nine dollars to a hundred and eight million five hundred and five, oh lord, thousand four hundred and sixteen dollars and amend program budgets as follows.
Take a roll call.
Um, Dr. Beta, do you? Um great, I'll read the explanation and then we can jump into uh roll call. So the, per this wrong date and let your computer die, um because I'm reading it from my phone. Sorry, team. Alrighty, explanation, per the city charter, each year, the school committee must submit to the city council a budget based upon the governor's proposal prepared in January. That means that each year, if the state legislator adopts a different figure, a budget revision is needed. This year, the legislator increased CPS budget approximately one, one point fifty-two million dollars. In the revised budget, several new positions are proposed and five existing positions are recommended for moving off of grants now that the figures for the title and grants have been made public. Approximately seventy percent of the positions are teaching positions. The balance are district-wide or central office, including recruiting the chief academic officer positions which previously existed. Roll call.
Adam Chair, can I just make a comment? Yeah, I just wanted to point out, um the legislature did pass a a higher budget than the, than the governor, but the Student Opportunity Act uh was not funded last year, so we should be um at two-sevenths of the bill fully, to to be fully funded, so we're definitely behind where we should be. So that number, in an ideal world where the legislature had properly funded the SOA, would be higher. So I just want folks to know that, thank you to the legislature for the additional million, but it, you know, education and justice advocates have been fighting for more and I believe it should have been higher, just wanna note that on the record, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jimenez, roll call please, Veronica.
Consideration and action to accept the recommendation of the school superintendent and amend the general fund for the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school budget to increase the funding from a hundred and seven million, four hundred and fifty-two thousand eight hundred and fifty-nine to a hundred and eight million, five hundred and five thousand, four hundred and fifteen, and amend programs and budgets as follows. Ms. Santiago?
Yes.
Mr. Jimenez?
Yes.
Ms. Alfaro?
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
Ms. Carlyle?
Yes.
Ms. Velez?
Yes.
Okay, that's seven in the affirmative, motion carries.
Seven in the affirmative, motion carries. Next, we have consideration and action to enter into executive session without returning to open session pursuant to MGL Chapter thirty-eight, Section two, for Purpose three. Explanation, to discuss collective bargaining strategy for teacher and paraprofessional units. Roll call, please.
Ms. Santiago?
I'm so sorry, Veronica, Madam Chair, that part broke up, can you repeat the?
I'll repeat that, actually, I missed that. Uh consideration and action to enter into executive session without returning into open session pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter thirty-eight, Section twenty-one A, for Purpose three. Ms. Santiago?
Yes.
Mr. Jimenez?
Yes.
Ms. Alfaro?
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Garcia? Ms. Garcia?
Yes.
Ms. Carla, Ms. Carlyle?
Yes.
Ms. Velez?
Yes.
Seven in the affirmative, motion carries.
Seven in the affirmative, motion carries. Team, with that, thank you for joining us, so I have a motion to adjourn this school committee meeting.
Motion to adjourn.
Do we, do we adjourn? Pr- I think we adjourn after.
To go into exec session.
So are we adjourning this portion and then entering executive session?
Yes, you voted to go into exec session.
Yeah, we we don't adjourn, we don't adjourn the the meeting until we end executive session, we we just enter exec, exec session.
We go off Facebook Live.
Yeah, so we'll go off Facebook Live and then enter an executive session.